Everyone, welcome to this regular meeting of the Board of Education. It is Monday, November 21st. Almost six o'clock. I was gonna say it's six o'clock. We're starting one minute early. Five fifty-nine.
I hope it's six o'clock.
Oh.
Right now.
Okay, right now. Let the record show that all board members are present. Please rise as we do the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, board, and before you have an agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the agenda is approved. Next up, there's a good, long list which Dr. Glass says is a good thing, which I agree, for the recognition. Dr. Glass.
Go Tigers. First up, we have Malia Neal from the Community Partnership of Southeast Missouri here with us tonight for a special presentation we're all thrilled about. She's gonna present us with a check for our after-school tutoring and enrichment programs that we received for the next two years. Excited about that. They're always a good partner. If there's a grant out there, they're the first ones at the table saying, "Hey, are you interested in this?" So, we really value their relationship there. Come on up and present it to us. Almost eight hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You wanna say anything? Go ahead.
You wanna tell a little bit about it?
Speaking of my...
On behalf of Community Partnership, we'd just like to thank the school for everything that you are doing for the kids, and thank the families, and we think this money funding would truly help you guys for the next two years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, that's like for robotics, and mentoring, and tutoring, and gaming, and several other opportunities that we offer after-school for all our students, K through 12. Do you have something?
(inaudible)
He just has to speak. Go ahead.
I'd just like to speak. It's for middle school through high school, so we're serving a lot of kids after-school. It's an after-school, and we also are serving kids before school as well for tutoring and enrichment. So, it's really exciting, and thank you, Malia, for your team getting that grant.
All right, next up, we're gonna keep this going. Girls tennis. Coach Boshin, are you here? I know you're here. Why don't you come on up and introduce your girls for us? They place fourth in the Missouri Class Two Tennis Doubles Tournament. Their All-State Showing is the highest finish for a doubles team in Cape Central history. Coach, good job.
I'm gonna say it wrong. Okay, we have Megan Maxton, and then Maria Mihangos. Oh, yeah. Got it.
Come on up, girls. Let everybody see you. Come on up.
If we could get a picture of the guys from that block.
Is your assistant coach here?
Yes. She's like, "Oh, yes."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have cross-country. Coach Bowinger and Coach Sheridan, are you here? Coach Sheridan's here. Ryan Seaball finished the year, this year, with the All-State Showing at Gaines Creek Crossing in Columbia. Ryan's personal best time of sixteen twenty. I think that was yours too, wasn't it, Casey?
Yes.
Sixteen twenty?
Yes.
Earned him tenth in the state. Congratulations to Ryan Seaball. Coach, you got any words to say about Ryan?
Sure, I could say great things about Ryan all day long, but one of the best things about that particular day is that he really put a race together. The state competition is extremely stout in this case, so for him to do what he did is definitely to be applauded that day.
Way to represent. Go Tigers.
That was our mile time.
It was one mile.
Yeah, it was only one mile when we were on.
Next up, we have Coach Powell and Coach Seerman. Coach Powell, you wanna introduce Finneas?
I do. Finn, will you go ahead and come on up here? I know you wanna stand up here in front of everybody, but please do. Okay, well, first of all, I wanna, oh, thank the board for all that you all do for us. We have great opportunities in Cape, and to do the things we wanna do, and travel, and go places, and give Finn and our other athletes just the best competition we can find. So, that being said, you know, we're a little challenged this year because we don't have a swimming pool. So, Finn really got the job done. He was our lone state qualifier this year for the boys, and the tough thing about Finn is it was hard to decide what events to put him in. He was really in lots of events in striking distance to be All-State, and so we looked at a few of those and landed on the two, the two-hundred free and the one-hundred fly, which everyone knows one-hundred fly is my stroke. So, anyway, Finn went in seeded eighth and ninth, and top eight is All-State, and he had a fabulous meet, and he qualified top eight in both those events. He finished fifth in the two-hundred and sixth in the one-hundred fly, and he was the only sophomore in either of those heats. So, to have Finn for two more years is really exciting. And just to know Finn a little bit more, he sets a great example for our team because he is a very healthy eater, and you know, a lot of high schoolers aren't really healthy eaters, and Finn is, and it's been good for the whole team for us to kind of follow Finn's eating habits. So, that's been really great. And again, for him to do what he did without our normal practicing, the way we like to do it, was just outstanding. So, we're really proud of Finn, and we appreciate y'all recognizing him tonight. Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you next year and the year after that, too.
I forgot to mention, we do score on four of the records at state, and Finn has an objective in the next two years.
Nice.
And last, but certainly not least, is our terrific Tigers. We are pleased to recognize our November terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected, received this award based on their service to others, leadership, and their scholarship. Parents, if, when we call your student forward, if you'd stand and be recognized as well, we'd appreciate it.
Alma Schrader Elementary, Avery Stoltz, second grade daughter of Jesse Stoltz. Avery joined her second grade class from a neighboring district midway through the first quarter. She mainly stood out as a leader in citizenship in the classroom. Avery is kind, respectful, and shows integrity every day. She works hard and perseveres through challenges. She's an excellent example to others and a joy to have in the classroom.
Blanchard Elementary, Kalen Sharp, secondary daughter of Katherine and James Sharp. Kalen started second grade without ever being inside a classroom before, and she glowed from day one, and she put forth her best effort, and has continued to do so daily. She excels in all she does, and is such a bright spot for all. Kalen is a delightful young lady who always has a smile on her face and a kind word for others. Kalen is a wonderful example of a Tiger student.
Clifford Elementary, Eliana Riving, fourth grade daughter of Tara and Tyler Riving. Eli is a great student. She's very respectful to not only the teachers at Clifford, but her classmates as well. She works hard on her schoolwork and helps her classmates when they need help. She's a great role model to her peers and is a wonderful addition to Clifford School.
Franklin Elementary, Hector Hernandez, first grade son of Mara Hernandez. Hector is kind, helpful, and a good friend to all. He's always trying his best and is a curious learner full of enthusiasm and joy. Hector is a fabulous student who loves learning and stays focused and attentive. He has a wonderful sense of humor and is a compassionate friend to his peers. Hector is polite and kind to teachers, staff, and students. Hector is a proud Tiger and shows he is responsible, respected, and loved.
Jefferson Elementary, Rumor Young, third grade daughter of Kristy Young. Rumor is a very caring student. She brightens everyone's day. Rumor makes sure everyone feels included. She can always be counted on to try her best. Rumor is kind and motivated, and she's an excellent role model. Congratulations, Rumor. Way to go.
Central Middle School, Jenna Schnerbusch, sixth grade daughter of Candace and Eric Schnerbusch. Jenna is the CMS terrific Tiger for the month of November due to the fact that she has extreme compassion, responsibility, and a true fire for learning. She is a roaring Tiger who's respectful, friendly, and has great sportsmanship. Continue roaring throughout your sixth grade year, Jenna.
Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Charles Lewis, eighth grade son of Miko Lewis.
Central High School, Samuel Cairns, twelfth grade son of Amy and Paul Cairns. Sam is a young man who exemplifies integrity. He follows through with what he says he will do and is an all-around pleasant individual. He takes great pride in his work and is considerate of others. Sam has built many positive relationships with peers and teachers in his time at CHS.
Central Academy, Alexa Watkins, eighth grade daughter of Misty McIntyre.
From October, Franklin Elementary, Karen Wheatley, second grade son of Amber White. And from October, Central High School, Henry Ruston, twelfth grade son of Martha and Mark Ruston.
Cole, are you supposed to be back in the picture?
Sam, get out of the front.
Okay, everybody, you can just smile if you'd like.
Stay there for your parents real quick.
Feel free to exit if you receive your award.
Don't intend on staying for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, well, someone was standing looking at me like, "Are you gonna say that?"
It's six fourteen, and it starts to dim.
All right, we'll move along. I'm gonna make this short. I don't really have a report
for the board president report, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Glass for his.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is Thanksgiving week. Just thought I'd talk a little bit about how thankful I am as superintendent of this great district, and just wanted to reflect on that for a second. Spend a lot of my day in the schools, walking the halls, and just proud every time I walk through those classrooms and in the buildings about what's going on in our school district, because it is amazing. The teachers are working so hard, the TAs are working hard, the principals, our administration. I'm just in awe of how strong our team really is. We are very, very blessed. All you have to do is go to conferences and visit with other districts to know how really blessed we are to have such a great district and great people working for our district. I'm equally as impressed with how beautiful our buildings are. We have great facilities. Our grounds, even our meals, our lunch meals, you know, we can make fun of them all we want, but our lunch ladies take great pride in what they do there, and of course, they've got a great leader in Dana Clark, making sure they have what they need. Of course, as you just witnessed, our students are incredibly talented. They just go above and beyond. And like I said with the football team last week, well, it wasn't even last week, last Saturday, you know, we may have not been the most talented football team out on that field, but we showed the most heart, and that goes for all our kids. They have a lot of heart. When they're outclassed as far as being talented and God-gifted ability, they make up for it in heart, and they go after it, and I'm so very proud of that because that goes a long way in life. You know, when the cards are stacked against you and you show a lot of grit and a lot of heart, it makes a world of difference, and it gets you a long ways. Of course, our families are so supportive, you know, and our community is so supportive. I mean, last week, the week before last, I guess I should say, you know, when we were looking for money to buy tickets to get in the football game, or we were looking for food to serve at tailgates, or, you know, and that's just one example, but we, all we have to do is pick up the phone, and our community is there, and not there with a dollar or two, but we're talking thousands of dollars to feed our kids, to get them into the gates, and whatever else they need. If they need clothing, they're there, too. And so, that is not gone unnoticed for me as a superintendent, and my administration, my cabinet. You know, our board, I'm very thankful for the board and how collaborative we are. We are very solution-oriented, and we go above and beyond, I think, to find out what the problem is and what the solution is, and I take great pride in that. We don't sweep things under the rug. We really try to air 'em out and be as transparent as we possibly can with it in every decision we make, and I'd say we were very lucky for that. It is important that we take a moment to appreciate how special our district really is and give thanks, because it is indeed a special place, and not every school district across America is this fortunate like I alluded to. So, this Thanksgiving week, be thankful that we are all here and part of this amazing district. It's a great day to be a Tiger, today and every day. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, and as Casey likes to say, I don't think I could've said it any better myself, so.
Let me try.
I'm not gonna try. That was excellent, so, thank you. Next up, we have academic service report.
We don't have anything at this time.
Okay, thanks. Instructural technology update.
You guys are in for a treat. I had a special request for Jamie to present this tonight. This is amazing. Every time I go to a technology show, I'm blown away, but this one in particular is amazing.
So, what he's hyping up for a live demonstration in a context where you don't normally use it, just gonna put that out there first. And it's been sitting there for like thirty or forty minutes without me touching it, so we'll see what happens. What we have, and you guys can't really see it unless you're up close here, but this laptop is a special laptop, and so it is, it's called a Z-Space Inspire, and these just came out. We've been working with the company since when, January, and having conversations with them when we first met them in January, and this device actually has head tracking features, you know, a lot of really cool things are, let me back up. So, you guys have heard of augmented reality and VR and stuff like that. So, this device is a headsetless VR and AR device, and so what's really great is you can, without having to wear a headset or special glasses, interact with any kind of VR tool, and so here in the next few weeks as well, we'll probably be showing you the headset version of this, but this device is great because you, for students with vision problems or accessibility issues, you can use this device and see lots of different things. And so, let me switch over here to the demo mode. So, where we have these, just so you guys know, this is at the CTC, and at the CTC, we've got six programs that are currently utilizing this. We've got HVAC, Sierra Electrical, Construction Trades, and the one I'm showing you today, I can't remember what the other two are off the top of my head, but the one I'm gonna demo for you today, I'm gonna show you the demo mode just to kind of give you a heads-up of some of the tools and things that it can do for respiratory therapy and for health occupations. And so, let me jump over here and try to do this with the microphone in my hand now, too. I didn't practice this part. So, this has a pin, special pin, that you can use to manipulate, and what you guys may or may not be able to see is, let's see if I can grab this. There we go. So, it's gonna be a little bit laggy on here because I'm projecting to this other computer here, and so I can take this device and I can actually manipulate it and pull it through the screen here, and just manipulate different objects, which is kind of cool. This is, like I said, this is the demo that you run through to learn how to use the device. But what's really cool is I can grab our heart here, throw it in this little well, and it's gonna throw open a... Turn it up here just a little bit. What's really cool about this heart is that I can come in and I can take a look at all the different parts of the heart, and I can come in and break it open and get in there and see all sorts of different parts, and I can get as close as it'll let me. See if you guys can see that or not. There we go. And you guys can see here a valve opening and closing here on the inside of the heart, and I hope, I think I just made that way too far out.
Can you guys tell he's in the air? He's not touching the computer.
Yeah, I'm not touching the computer whatsoever. I'm just using this pin.
He's moving in the air.
Yep, and of course, I pulled it, there we go. So, I had to jump out of there real quick because it's a little bit crazy, and what you guys can kind of see is it's actually tracking my head, and what it looks for, like for me whenever I get this close, is, and maybe I've been sitting here for a little bit too long, it'll actually track my head and become three-dimensional on this side. We didn't wanna just freak you guys out because it gets real crazy on 2D whenever you try that, so. So, I'm gonna jump out of here real quick, and I'm gonna jump over to our visible body app, and this is what respiratory therapy and Health Oc will both be using, and the program that I was using to show you guys just broke, which is what I was worried about the whole time. Give me half a second here. Recalibrate it real quick. And let's see if we can get back to that.
So, what I was demonstrating at the conference while he's loading this thing up is a engine. I was able to break apart a diesel engine. We're gonna use this in advanced automotives and things, and really, I can watch an engine run in real time and just kind of start pulling, you know, the fan pulley off and the internal parts apart, and look at pistons actually reacting to the camshaft and all that, and then rebuild the engine piece by piece without actually getting my hands, you know, be able to do it virtually.
That was one of the awesome things last week. We just got these last week, and we're doing training on Thursday with some of the guys and gals, and HVAC, Mr. Berry, he was just blown away, because he, you know, he works with compressors and all sorts of different things like that, where he's trying to teach them the mechanics of how things works, but he can't really show them without it being extremely dangerous in some cases. And so, what's great is these provide different tools and mechanisms for them to be able to see, you know, how liquid flows and how the pressure builds up without, you know, having to take the whole thing apart just to show them one little piece. And we've got hundreds of different types of pieces. Construction, you can actually build a house step by step. You put the studs in the right place. If you put it in the wrong place, you get it wrong. Like, there's all sorts of labs and stuff that go along with them, and, you know, they've gotta do the right thing with this in a somewhat real context without having to spend, you know, hundreds of dollars on supplies to be able to do so for every student. And so, what I like about it is that I can, as the teacher, I can actually record this presentation, bring up different content, you know, I can talk about the hyoid process here and how it's the only bone that doesn't connect to other, directly to other bones, and, you know, if a student wants to look up a little bit more about that, they can. They don't know how to say the word. It'll tell them. I don't have the audio set up properly, but I can also jump in here and say, you know, I can break through without actually having to break bones and take a look even closer. So, I'm taking out the jawbone there, can see the teeth, and really jump up inside of there and see all the different bones inside of, inside of the body. And so, it's a little bit crazy, but it's a really cool step and for them to be able to jump in and explore the body, explore all the different parts of a house before they actually have to build the house, and, you know, with HVAC, they can actually build systems inside of houses and know what parts that they need, make plans for that, and do different labs that are connected along with it. And so, what's really cool, like I said, teachers, we've got a set, one of these for the teacher, and then the students also have, there's a set of fifteen on a cart, and they can go in and interact with these as well. And so, CTC, as you guys know, it's a really cool place for them. This is, a ton of their stuff's actually built for CTCs, and we're excited to be one of the very first CTCs to do this. So, I don't know if you guys have anything else to add to it, so. And afterwards, if you guys want to come over, and same with you guys in the crowd, it's better to see it than it is for me to show it here in 2D, especially when it's three, so it's a little bit, like I said, out of context, but afterwards, feel free to come over and check it out.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you. Awesome. All right, next we have CTA report.
Hi. First, we have a little thank you for your support for our CTA. They recently went to convention, and I mentioned before, our district really supports us a lot for all of our CTA efforts, but specifically for convention, so we just have a little thank you thing for our board, so.
Just a little photo.
You know, I don't have a lot of funds, so, that's all really good. We just have a few shout-outs, basically... Basically, we just want to keep supporting our staff. You know, this can be kind of a hard time with the holiday craziness and grades and all of that. And so just keep putting that support out there and thank you for all that you do. At Central Academy, our science teacher, Delaney Cummins, who's new to us this year, has been knocking it out with awesome hands-on assignments, which are posted out in the hallway and look amazing. At Clifford, Amy Emmerdfer, our principal, was recently nominated for the Zonta Woman of Excellence. And we felt like she was the winner, but, you know, a lot of things she does, people don't see, so. And also tonight, she's hosting a Thanksgiving feast in which all of our families and staff get to eat a Thanksgiving meal together for free. So it's a really awesome event that we get to put on. At the high school, Coach Gibbs and the football staff for all the hard work and the caring that they put into the boys on the football team. If you guys could see the video of my dad jumping up and down like a six-year-old boy after the game, worth every minute. At Jefferson, Veronica Sanders, our secretary, has been a huge help these past few weeks. With our school nurse out on maternity leave and limited time with sub nurses, Veronica has stepped up and been a stand-in nurse, helping with the sick kids. And I guess the stomach bug hit JE hard this past week, but Veronica managed to help out in any way she could. At the junior high, Coach Limmer, the head coach of the Super Smash Brothers team, for leading the team to winning the state championship. And at the middle school, Jen Perez, the sped teacher, has the utmost patience. Her fun spirit and exceptional creativity allows every person at CMS to adore her. Jen's students are not easy, but she handles them like a champ. No matter the day, Jen leaves with a smile, ready to start again the next day. Not only does she thrive being a sped teacher, but she just finished her first competition as our robotics instructor with Sarah Kitchen. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the treasury finance report.
This report is for October. Beginning fund balance for the general fund started at 10.7 million. We received revenues of approximately 1.4 million, expenses of 1.6, and a $1.5 million dollar transfer was transferred to the special revenue fund, which covers certified salaries, leaving us with a ending fund balance in the general fund of a little over 90 million. The cash and investment detail, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, support services report.
Good evening. This past week or last week, we finished up our DESI admin review. It is unofficial at this point, but we had an outstanding review. The DESI representative was very complimentary of Dana McLeod and Kayla and our entire staff. They went around, toured some of the buildings and pulled some of the kids coming through and it just turned out to be an outstanding review and we welcome that. When we get the official results, once she's back in the office, then I'll be able to share all that with you. Buildings and grounds, Jefferson is coming along quite nicely and still on track. We're looking mid-December for completion. And other than that, I have nothing further to report unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Next up, board reports. Do we have a MSBA delegate report?
Yeah, I mean, we had the conference, state conference a couple of weeks ago. A lot of the presentations, if you still have the app, you can get to them from there. And also there's a link you can go to. There's a lot of good seminars, went in contentious board meetings, all sorts of fun stuff like that. It's a really good, good weekend, so.
Thanks. Legislature report.
I had huge plans to have a giant legislative report after the MSBA conference. And then I didn't go to the MSBA conference because I stayed for the boys soccer. So next month will be the biggest report ever on the legislative side. Be prepared.
Oh, well.
Bring something to eat, a snack or something.
All right, thank you. Next, foundation report.
So sorry for my casual attire, but I got to put together 35 baskets, which does not sound like a lot, but it was over $3,000 worth of food today that we handed out to several of our families and some staff members that are of need. So was super excited to do that. We had turkeys and, and just the whole, the whole gamut. So we had a lot of fun today doing that. We gave out over $6,000 in award scholarships to our teachers. One of those went to Heather Fisher at Jefferson. Then we had a smaller one at Jefferson Elementary to Doc, Natasha Dawkins. And then Olivia Carter and Matt Miller at the junior high. Matt Miller, we've been supporting his esports program. We bought him $2,000 worth of some really nice orange and black leather chairs. So super excited to see those come in over the holidays so we can put them all together. So we are gearing up for Penguin Party. That is February 11th. That is our biggest fundraiser. And we have our band coming in from Atlanta. Mike Larry, he's coming back. And we have Awkward Timing playing during the cocktail hour and it's going to be a great night. So super excited about the plans and moving forward with that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, the approval of the consent agenda items, including minutes of previous meeting of October 24th, the payment of bills, and CHS prospectus for guitar three. Do I have a motion? Second, any discussion or questions about those items? No? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Those are approved. Next, in business. Get it to open. Motion to consider it as to accept the 2021-22 audit report prepared by Stanley Dernberger, Hopper and Associates. Do I have a motion? Second, Mr. McDonald, this is a discussion.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Lindsay, I just want to thank Lindsay and her team for all that they do to keep those checks and balances and proper controls in line so that our audit runs very smoothly. And I think, I think Patrick will attest to that here in a minute. But, you know, a lot of people don't realize how big we are. We're, we're right around a $60 million budget. And that's, that's a lot, you know? That's a lot to keep track of, to make sure everything's running properly and the proper controls are there, like I said. So kudos to Lindsay and her team for, for really having another great audit. Of course, there's always suggestions, things we can approve on, but overall, we do very, very well, as big as we are, from a financial control standpoint. So thank you, Lindsay. And with that said, I'll turn it over to you.
So we have Patrick Kittner here tonight from Stanley Dernberger, Hopper and Associates to present the audit. He started onsite in September and we worked on it all the way up until this weekend. And so he looks at a variety of things, starting with our financials. He audits attendance, transportation, and then he also audits our federal grants that we receive. And he acts as a resource for us throughout the years, so we certainly appreciate that. Another thing he does is he takes our financials that I present in June and he converts them to the accrual basis of accounting for our financial statements, which is a big and tedious task, but he does do that for us. So Patrick, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. So I get to hand out the terrific tiger for the financial side. So, no, I, no, I appreciate coming back here and I actually appreciate, we made it work to where we see you guys in November. So the last few years, you know, we've been here in December and it's always kind of been a goal of ours to move it back up in November and stuff. So it's, it's a, it's a chore, it's a task, because a lot of the reporting requirements that the, you know, that the district has to do with federal grant stuff keeps on getting pushed back and delayed and stuff. So it's a challenge to get everything going and reconciled by November, but, you know, I feel we did a good job. Like Lindsay and Neil said, you know, I looked at the financial side, looked at the attendance side, transportation, federal grants. And, you know, I don't, consistent with the past few years, you're one of the few schools that I have that I do not have any findings or weaknesses or control deficiencies that I have to put in the report. So I think that's a testament to the operations of the district because it, you know, it is a, you know, it continues to get challenging with all the, the changes, with the requirements from the federal grant side, as well as the constant coding challenges and stuff. So that is a, definitely a testament to the, to the district to stay on top of all the requirements. You have a, you have a strong set of financials. In the financial statements, you know, you'll see that, you know, like Lindsay said, so these are presented on the GASB accrual basis. So you can't, you can't look at it compared to the ASBR on the cash basis because we have receivables, payables, and as well as the conversion of the pension benefit, which kind of distorts the numbers if you look at it on the accrual side. Because, you know, as of the, the presentation of the pension information is actually a year behind, is what PSRS and peers provides. So if you think back as of June 3, 2021, the economy, the market, the investments were doing very well. So the pension impact was, was actually a very positive impact because it, you know, because of the investment performance, you know, it drove down the net pension liability and stuff. So that actually, you know, added a lot of value to the financial statements on the accrual side. But keep in mind, obviously, as the investments flip, like say next year, the, it's, you know, the pension liability is going to flip and stuff. So that, like I said, it impacts these financial statements, but it has no impact on the operational position or condition of the district on a cash basis. You know, statutes only require the, only allow for the pension amount to go up by 1% per year. It hasn't changed for nine, 10 years and stuff. So I don't expect that to change, it's just kind of presentation. So with that being said, just on a cash side, you know, we've, our fund balances increased from, I remember what, 24.1% to about 28.2% at the end of the year. So fantastic increase. And I saw that pretty much across the board with most districts in the state of Missouri. And that's because of the, you know, the funding sources from the carers and ARPA money and stuff. We added about 6.9 million in revenue this year. That was kind of split out, the main, the main categories of our increase in revenues was the drawdown of about 4.3 million in SO2 money that we had available. We also had about a 700,000 increase in our property tax collections because of SS valuation. And then we had about Prop C, actually went up by about 600, some thousand as well. And then food service, that went up. And that's because, it's either the first or the second year that they gone to the federal reimbursement rate for food service and stuff. So they're getting consistent with most districts, the food service revenue is, has, has increased because of that. On the expense side, expense, cash basis expense standpoint, so we had about a 6.9 million operational cash increase, had about a 3.2 million operational cash expense increase, majority of that being in salaries and benefits. So we had about a 6.2% increase on our salaries and benefits. So it's about 2.4 million overall. And then the rest of it has to do kind of with purchase services, so that, you know, the cost of transportation obviously has gone up a little bit with, with fuel and everything and had operated more days this year than last year. And then with all the CARES Act money, the federal, federal side, you know, there are some additional purchase services that we had, like with the adult education, that, that increased those costs as well. So all accountable. So that's kind of the major changes in the, in the cash. The, from the federal grant side, so this year we looked at Title I, looked at the Education Stabilization Act, which is all the CARES Act money, all the ARPA money. We had about 6.2 million dollars in total funds that flowed, flowed through the district under the Education Stabilization Act. And probably going to have that year, because that, you know, district, not district, but the government does consider that a higher risk program. So I was going to pretty much test that no matter what. And we were also on the cycle for the Title I this year, as well as the student Pell Grant. And then I had to test one small, what they call, you know, a B grant, which is less than 750,000. And that was the, the grant that I chose this year, they're getting, because of the restrictions on it or the, and the, and the risk on it was the, I'm not, it's through the DHSS, it's another CARES Act grant for COVID mitigation. You know, and I can't remember the name of the exact grant itself, but it really stemmed to, it was COVID mitigation passed through the DHSS. And, and the majority of that grant was used for salaries and benefits in terms of assisting the district, you know, toward the COVID mitigation needs and, and services performed. So any questions kind of on the numbers? If you do not have questions, I do entertain you to, to go through, excuse me, go through Lindsay or go through Neil. I do feel, I do, you know, Lindsay said that I converted from a Castro accrual. We work together to do, to do that. She looks at every single document that I, we use. She understands that, so more than capable to answer any of those questions. I'm very comfortable to say that, you know, these are your financial statements. Obviously, the opinions are mine and they're unqualified and clean, but I feel very comfortable. I know, I know that Lindsay fully understands the full document and I also trust the board, understands this document as well. And, you know, I do want to entertain questions either now or afterward, if you have on that. But all in all, like I said, I'm, I'm very pleased to work with the district. I do feel that the procedures, the controls are strong. I think we do have, have a lot of checks and balances. From an operational standpoint, really the only thing that Lindsay and I kind of talked about is, you know, we have our checks and balances and I can see through the reconciliations that we're, we're cleaning things up and fixing things toward the end result is correct. The classification of expenditures is really strong in this district. I think they do a very good job of classifying expenditures with all the various object codes, project codes, source codes. So, you know, but my, really my main challenge for, for Lindsay was to examine the processes that we have throughout that and how we're identifying and correcting this at the end, can we take some of those corrective controls and move them up front toward identifying classifications or changes earlier in the process rather than in the back half of the process? And I'm not saying it's, it's an issue, I'm, that's a challenge for every district. Challenge for every entity to kind of reexamine your procedures to say, okay, can we move, reconciliation procedures that we do at the back end to validate? Can we do some more of that upfront? Or push that to the individuals who are performing the duties upfront and stuff? So that's, you know, you always want to evaluate that and see how can we make it better and stuff? So I definitely don't think it's a negative. I think it's just overall observation that I, you know, I really have for all my entities, districts, as well as for profit. So that was really my major operational suggestion. Otherwise, you know, we kind of talked about, just for all districts, we do have a lot of money, federal money that's coming in, that's one-time money and stuff. So making sure that, you know, all my districts understand, you know, I've conveyed that, you know, we, our balances are high. These funds, this ARPA money, this CARES Act money is not going to continue, in two or three years, it's going to be gone. So we have to make sure that we don't spend assuming that this money will continue to be received going forward and stuff. So that's just kind of, but that's across the board for everybody to, to evaluate and understand. So, but otherwise, I appreciate it. And any questions?
No questions?
I know I give a lot of credit to Lindsay and she deserves it, but there's a lot of people that, that have a lot to do with this and making sure that these, these controls are in place. You know, of course, we have Beth sitting right here with us that goes above and beyond, dots every I, crosses every T. It drives me nuts most of the time, but without her, we wouldn't have such clean data. And she really does a fantastic job with that. And Josh and his team, as far as food service goes, and then of course, our title programs, our federal programs are just impeccable. So we've got a lot of good people at the hounds watching over this, making sure that we're on the right track. And so I thank the whole team.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to accept the 2021-22 audit report prepared by Stanley Dernberger, Hopper and Associates. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Opposed? That's approved. Next, we have a motion to be considered to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board with Brockmeyer Construction as construction manager at risk for the indoor training slash locker room facility on the high school campus. Do I have a motion? Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, so, you know, we've had a lot of discussion around building the high school campus out. We've, we've been very fortunate as a district from when I initially came on board in two thousand eight, running a, a facility audit, trying to, to shore up some of the things that, that we were deficient on. And one of those things was a football stadium, athletic stadium that we were able to, to build back in two thousand and ten. Along with that was locker rooms, which we weren't able to build back then. Athletic facilities that could, could really be a house for not only our, our football team, but our soccer team, our track team, and try to get them out of our main campus. Because if you remember, and, and some of you were around, and some of you may have not have been around, but when we built that high school out there, we were, we were outside of the budget for that high school. So they had to pare that down quite a bit. And I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but a lot of things got cut back then. So, it, it left us at a disadvantage for some of our athletic programs and things. Well, we're now currently in a financial position where we can put some of that stuff back. And so, you know, shortly after we built that stadium, we, we went to the state championship football game. So, there's no doubt some of those things pay off. When you're starting to build programs, you're starting to build cultures, you're really trying to promote athletics as a, an extension of your academics within the, the school building. And now that we've moved beyond that into our elementaries and really trying to, to embrace elementary programs, sports programs, intermural programs down there at that level, to get, to build tiger pride and to, to make a connection. Teachers are able to utilize that, or, or at least our goal, if they haven't started yet, to utilize that as a behavior tool, an attendance tool. So, I, I don't think there's any argument that athletics plays a big part in, you know, students' lives. And maybe not every student, but a big majority. And we've got, out there at the high school, we've got twenty-four percent that participate in our athletics. National average is, I think, fifty-seven percent if my, my memory serves me correctly. So we got a ways to go. We want to connect with all students. And I think this is a big step forward in building cultures. You know, we've had, we've had, we're coming off a great week with, with the football program. We're coming off a great season with the soccer program. You know, we have, our kids putting in the work. They need, they need places to go in the offseason and things. So, we're not only proposing a athletic facility, locker room facility, but also an indoor workout facility. And what that looks like is, is yet to be determined. The budget's gonna determine that. But what this, what this does here is allows us to work with a construction manager and an architect to move forward in designing a building that will accommodate the needs of our sports programs and our coaches, and what they feel like they need to take it to the next level for not only the current students, but also the students that are, that are gonna be up there in a few years. And, and really utilizing that, not, not only for the high school, but also for the community and community programs, practice times. That's, that, that space is always invaluable out there when you talk to, to youth league programs and things. So, we really feel like this will be a, a big community support asset, and, and that it's very much needed. And all you have to do is sit in the room with, with the coaches and, and understand that. Because they, they do. They're, they're crammed in there like sardines. You know, I had an architect walk through the locker rooms, and he said, you're, you're deficient in a lot of different ways, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And I said, no, I just needed it on paper. And, and he did that for me. So, we're really just trying to support our, our kids, our coaches, our programs, and ultimately, the school district and community. So, that's, with that, I'll open up for questions.
So today, we're just voting on getting more information about this. We're not voting to approve the project, correct?
We're moving forward with the construction manager at risk. We currently have budgeted an amount in there, in our current budget. The budget that you voted, you voted on back in?
June.
June. Thank you, Lindsay. And so, we have that budget amount allocated. We plan on, on proceeding. Obviously, we'll keep you updated and informed as, as each step goes, what the conceptual drawing would look like. You know, we've got one conceptual. We're gonna take this to the estimator, see what that looks like. We'll come back with a number and say, this is what we're, what we can buy for X amount of dollars. This is what the budget will allow for this year. If we want to go one route, here's what you're looking at. We go another route. This just keeps us moving in the process.
And what's that budgeted amount?
We have two million dollars sitting in the budget right now for an athletic facility. You know, prices are up, so I don't know what that's gonna get us. Coaches have, you know, various coaches have different desires on what that looks like. So we're gonna try to compromise and meet in the middle.
Do we have an idea? I know when I asked, I asked, asked about this before, we didn't have an idea. Is this, is Brockmeyer gonna be able to give us an idea of what the maintenance cost on this building is going to be over the next twenty-five years?
Oh yeah, we can, we can run those numbers. We don't have that because we don't know what the design is yet.
Right, that, that'll be included in this. Okay.
Yep.
This is kind of the last piece in the, in the high school campus that was cut, the original design, right?
There can always be more, but this is one of the last major pieces, yes.
So they cut locker room size, they cut the Kinder Hall piece, the fine arts.
That's right.
And they cut the academic wing that was added onto the south and stadium. So those were the big pieces that they cut out of the original design.
And you were here around, around that time, I mean, shortly thereafter. So, you would, you would certainly know that.
But this isn't a, this isn't something that you just pulled out of the air. This is something that was kind of in the main plan all along.
Right. We just weren't able to do it with the initial forty million dollar bond issue back in two thousand and ten. And then, of course, we had in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and nineteen had other needs too. So, we're just now getting to the position, and it takes years to get to these positions, but just now getting to these positions, we're, you know, this is one-time money. That's the bucket we would take it out of, the capital fund for or capital projects budget. This doesn't impact our, our yearly annual operating budget. So, this is, this is certainly time to do it. I don't, you know, I've been asked, you know, what, like the next bond issue? When, you know, our bond issue is the mechanism that we use to make sure that our buildings are up to, up to speed, and we, we stay up with equipment that's in its life cycle, roofs that's in their life cycle, parking lots, our classroom spaces, programming space, and things of that nature, you know. So I've been asked, you know, what, what are we looking at there? We got, still have to develop that plan, but, you know, even in three years, we're only eligible with the, the bonds that we pay down, around a fifteen million dollar no-tax increase bond issue. So, fifteen millions, a, a good number, but things are, are rising. So I don't know if I would even recommend running a fifteen million. We may wait another five years before I'd run a bond issue. Because we are in very good shape right now, and I don't want to see us backslide. And I think, I think we're good for the next five years.
So Dr. Glass, just to clarify, that two million dollars is already included in the capital projects fund, and that, that money can't be moved. It's there, and that's it.
It's what we use for.
Right, but I mean, we can't like move it to special services fund or something like that. It's, it's there, right?
It's really our one-time money. Yeah, we don't, it's not something that I foresee us getting on an annual basis, you know, from our assessed valuation.
So the argument of, and I'm just trying to clarify here. The argument of we could pay our teachers more, give them a bonus, we can't move that money from that account.
No, I would not ever.
So we couldn't do that even if we wanted to.
Well, you could, but I wouldn't recommend doing that, no. Because what happens when that runs out?
Right, I mean, I understand. I'm just trying to clarify for anybody who doesn't.
And that's exactly what Patrick was saying back there, you know, when he stood up. He said, you know, realize that these are one-time monies. These are some things that, that you need to be cautious of.
Right.
That you don't want to put those to ongoing expenses. And that's exactly what I'm, why I'm proposing projects outside of those ongoing expenses.
Right, but I just wanted to bring it up for anybody to, so that people could understand and the community.
Now, what would be an ongoing expense are the utilities and things of that nature that you brought up, the operating costs. There, there's gonna be a cost to that. But, you know, I, from a grand scheme, from a sixty million dollar budget, it's nominal.
And that was kind of why I brought up my point, in that a lot of times when you start talking about athletic facilities, you get a lot of pushback and say, well, can those monies be used better in other areas? Academic areas, you know, special needs, you know, situations. And we've addressed all of those at the high school, and this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle to complete what the original intent of the high school campus was. And so, I just want to make sure that, again, that people understand that this isn't just something we pulled out of there. This is something that's been in the works for a while, so.
And this does go hand in hand with the intermurals of the elementary school trying to, you know, get these kids involved from a younger age so that they get, when they get to the high school, right, that fifty-seven percent instead of twenty-four.
Yeah. How exciting is that to go up and play on the high school indoor campus, you know, and, and sports facility? I mean, that, to me, that, that's what hooks your, your younger kids.
Well, I mean, it looks like a pretty luxurious, you know, building that we're talking about here. You know, other districts, neighboring districts don't have this. This is pretty nice.
This is, this is, this would be like a BBL type building, you know, a metal.
No, but I mean, like, the, the facility itself seems very nice. Other, you know, Jackson doesn't have anything like that. Sykeson doesn't have anything like that. Pobl Bluff, you know, they don't have a facility like this.
They're talking, but no, they don't have it yet.
Right, they, they don't, you know.
Farmington does. We went up and toured theirs.
Do they? Okay.
And they had a, a very nice facility.
Okay. North County?
They're coming.
This is something the marching band can use?
As Mr. Beck, yeah, of course. As Mr. Beck alluded to, he said, these are all, all over the place down in, in Arkansas.
So, yeah, Texas, I think, has a whole bunch too, right?
Very common where I grew up, grew up having an indoor facility. Every year I participated in athletics. Every year I participated in college athletics. The farther south you get, the more common it is.
And we're just as good.
That's right. Go Tigers.
Any other questions or comments? All good questions. So the motion is to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a contract on behalf of the board with Brockmeyer Construction as construction manager at risk for an indoor training slash locker room facility on the high school campus. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? That is approved. Do we have any other information or proposals from any board members?
I'd just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and to remind everybody to get online, buy your tickets, bring your friends out, pack the house on Saturday at one o'clock to come watch our team.
Yeah, it's gonna be exciting.
It's gonna be a good game. The weather's gonna be beautiful, so. This is gonna be the fifties.
We're doing like nine hundred and fifty hot dogs for the tailgaters. They'll come hungry.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. We're adjourned.